Welcome. Village C would respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered on the land of the Etsy to traditional territory of the Comox First Nation, the traditional keepers of this land. Calling the meeting to order. Introduction to late items. I'm sorry. Do you make a part of the way they speak?
No.
You did.
No, I didn't.
I heard you.
It is.
See? Approval of agenda. Everybody good with the agenda? Excellent. Petitioned allegations? None correspondence done. Council reports? None. Reports of committees, none unfinished business, none. Okay, thanks for coming in, everybody. Staff reports. Strategic planning. Now, what would you folks prefer? That we take it in for information and discussion first? And then get into the discussion, or do you want it at the beginning? No, but what would you prefer?
Either or.
Great. What would you guys prefer? Since I can't get a straight answer. Either or, excellent. Okay, well, the or is that the committee of the whole received a strategic planning report for information and discussion. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
I will second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion is carried. CEO? Or CFO? Would you like to speak on this matter before I get into the next one, please?
Sure. So, I think the staff report outlines everything that I wanted to convey. I mean, really, here, this, it's important for us as staff and to to just inform council and bring counsel through through the financial planning process to incorporate a strategic planning component to that. So, really, there's been no discussion about strategic planning so far that I'm aware of, so we're coming at this relatively late in the game. If council, so because we're this late in the game, I have concerns about being able to find a third party consultant to take counsel through what would, you know, what I think would probably be a couple of month process typically. Find, find a selection of people to choose from, find out about their availability, once they become engaged to work with council and staff on some pre-session questions and answers, get together with staff, get together with council, produce a strategic plan document, you're probably talking a couple of three months. And we don't have that now. So that's, you know, that's my summary of that option further to the staff report, which leaves a couple of other options. I'll tackle the last one first, and that would be for council to adopt the existing 2022 strategic plan. My feedback or input into that is that it wouldn't allow this staff, you know, I'm specifically referring to myself in conjunction with previous staff to have input into, you know, what we're going to do in 2023 as a corporate work plan. More importantly, it wouldn't allow this council to have input into what we're going to prioritize for 2023. So that's why I've, I guess, recommended option one, which is to take the 2022 plan using in-house resources, myself, to facilitate a strategic planning process that to its core would include a session, a session with council, I would, pardon me, a session with staff, I would lead a session with staff for staff to give their input to me, collect that information, pardon me, to give input to me around their priorities, what they feel is important to them as staff, what is needed for them as staff around projects, etc. Do exactly the same with council. And, and then to, then to bring the two groups together and do it collectively. And really what we're doing is tweaking the 2022 plan, not rewriting it. It's, and I emphasize that in the staff report because the difference in the amount of time required is, is significant. We're, I'm guessing I'm probably going to need a half a day with staff, a half a day with council, and then somewhere around a half a day with the groups together. And that would be basically a summary of the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Have you done strategic planning before?
Yes.
Okay, because I don't think we've ever brought in a consultant here, ever. It's usually done with the CAO to the staff. So I do agree the fact that we should not be spending six to fifteen thousand dollars to bring somebody in. That's, I believe, would be your privy.
So, I appreciate that perspective. People in my position will tell you that I too, as a CAO, deserve to be able to contribute input as a staff person. And that the process can be compromised when I'm both facilitating and serving as a CAO. I can be, I mean, I can tell you I can be very impartial, but having a third party to lead people through the process, to lead groups through the process, to lay out the rules of engagement, where the separation is, there, it, 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 there's, there's value, there's great value in having a third party. And many organizations will invest in that third party to sort of, to bring, to bring to the process that impartiality. And I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that subject matter expertise, there's people that do strategic planning full-time as a profession. So there's several nuances to it that, for myself, I've taken strategic planning certification at Royal Roads, I've gone through several staff, senior management and council or CAO and council strategic planning processes, I've led them before in-house.
Okay, so you believe that you have the skills required to handle it on your own, correct?
With the parameters, given the timelines and that we're working with, given I would like this council to have input, given I would like staff to have input, I'm prepared to provide that, yes.
Okay, the other question was option three. At Cal's, you continue working with the current 2022 strategic plan. Where does the the consultant come into play? On option three? Because this is saying we have the comprehensive strategic planning session in the fall of 2023 with the goal of producing a new strategic plan for 2024. But then you have the estimated cost between six and fifteen thousand. So I'm a little confused on that one, if you could clarify, please?
So there's a typo there, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, there's a typo there. So there's a mistake in the report, I apologize. So option three, as I outlined already, is to continue with the 2022 strategic plan as stated. So there'd be basically no effort to incorporate this council's input, this staff's input, it's basically acknowledged that it's late in the hour and we're going to proceed forward with the 2022 plan, as is.
Okay.
There's several items on it that are not complete. We could pick up on that and just roll forward without any future engagement or any additional engagement and and, and work with it.
So typically, correct me if I'm wrong, the strategic plan is done first because that's what's also going to set you up for your five-year business plan, correct? So the option of actually doing this in the fall is outside of the date that the government requires, is it not? For the, doesn't your budget have to be set by, was it May fifteenth or something? You see? Sorry?
Yes, so, so there's no requirement for us to do strategic planning. Strategic planning is a tool that's used to feed the budget and to set, set a work plan, a strategic plan as a tool.
Right.
You know, you don't have to do a strategic plan, strategic planning and strategic priority setting of, if you go back some while or something that certain municipalities did, but not all, more, more often now, I think most of, yeah, most, I think is fair to say, most municipalities and regional districts, local governments function with a strategic plan or a set of strategic priorities. This, this, as it relates to your question and the timing of the budget would feed into, we'd have to do this promptly. So again, we're searching for three, four-hour blocks approximately. And we need to do that in and around our next cow meeting. And and then, yes, it would feed the budget schedule that that Mrs. Clark has already established.
So if we went to option three, and we worked on this strategic plan from now until, so we can get the gentleman up to speed, basically, in the fall, if it was completed, we would have to do amendments to the five-year plan. Would we? No?
No. So the strategic plan is a tool that helps us organize our thoughts, our wishes and everything, so.
Which connected to budget.
Which is connected to the budget. The budget, so the budget is due May fifteenth, as you said, but that's, that's not a date unto itself, there's a bunch of processes that need to happen, occur leading up to May fifteenth. So the budget really needs to be finalized around the beginning of April. Beginning of April needs to be close to finalized, adopted, and then and then we can begin that process. As far as strategic planning goes, as a new, as a new council, it's not, it's not unusual for you to be in this position right now to not have done strategic planning yet, as a new council. You were just elected in the fall, you've come together for a couple of meetings, you're getting familiar with within your roles, and this is a nuance of being a new group. Come this year, we might want to be doing strategic, pardon me, not come this year, at the end of this year, we might want to be thinking about strategic planning, perhaps in later November or very early in January. I'm staying away from the holiday season. And be ready for budget season, which, as you can see, is beginning here late January. But we will be doing, we could do a strategic plan for multiple years, I don't, I wouldn't encourage it this go-round. Again, my suggestion is that we go with with option three.
Option one.
Pardon me, option one. In-house. No cost. A revision to the current 2022 plan, we carry that forward with measurables, identified everything for 2023. And that we look at 2024 unto itself, or a 2024 to 2027 strategic plan later in the year.
Okay. Counselor Gilken, what do you think?
I, I do agree with.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. I, I am in agreeance with option one, just because of the, obviously, no cost part, that's my, that was my biggest pet peeve, and yeah, that was my bet. Thank you.
Counselor Poulsen?
I certainly agree with option one, I, for a few reasons, I think the previous council worked on this 2022 strategic plan in November of 2021. And it was a few days, few, two four-hour sessions only with council members. And at that point, there was only three council members attended, I believe.
It'd be three and a half.
Three. Sorry. And reading through the 2022 plan, I think it is a good way for the new counselors to get up to speed on what the previous council was doing and where it intend, intended to go, as well as giving them a chance for their input into 2023, after it's, the 2022 is reviewed and amended and updated. I think there's also things on the 2022 plan that have been completed, as well as look at adjusting the items that haven't been completed, or inserting newer, more appropriate parts of the plan. So I, I think it's a good idea, and if we need to go to having a paid consultant coming in, then by late 2023, the new council will be more familiar with everything and we'd get more benefit out of it. That's my input.
Counselor Burchett?
Yeah, I believe that option one is a great opportunity for the new CAO to get involved with the staff and to progress on what work has been done before. And it's also a great opportunity for council to go through this process and again, build on the work that was done by the previous counselors. And this will set us up for future success when we do the 2024 and beyond strategic plans, which will help us with the finances.
Counselor Tinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I agree with option one, based on all the comments that have always, already been cited by the previous counselors, thank you.
So we have an option of doing the late 2023, doing a strategic plan for 2024, is that correct?
Thank you, um, thank you. We have all sorts of options moving forward after 2023. You can do 2024 unto itself, you can do, you know, you can do each year unto themselves. You can do a multi-year and break it into short-term, medium, long-term goals that capture year one, year two, year three. The framework is, is very flexible and there's lots of options.
Yeah, so a question to the CFO. Correct me if I'm wrong, but whatever we put in the strategic plan, it's transferred basically to the budget. So if we put in some pie in the sky, for example, we need a few million dollars for a project, that can affect the, but the current budget, where we would have to increase our taxes to a certain amount to make sure that we're putting away for that, is that correct? Am I saying this correct, CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sort of, so strategic planning doesn't necessarily have a financial impact. So there may be something in strategic planning that won't cost any money, but it's something that council wants to pursue, is important to you. It may not funnel into the financial plan if there's no cost.
But if there is something that is a cost.
Correct. But at that point, it gets put into the financial plan, and then that's brought to council and staff usually work to present some auctions as to how those things are going to be funded. Is it possible? Is there money in reserves? Is there grants available? Et cetera, so you're still approving the financial plan. If something in the strategic plan cannot be funded, then things need to be modified, and I'll defer to the CAO.
CAO?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I agree with everything Ms. Clark has, has said. I'd only add that to, to your, to your question, strategic planning is not going to occur a boundaryless or without support resources provide, supporting information, supportive resources provided as part of the process to say, we're not going to allow, we're not, not going to allow, we're not going to just let you throw caution to the wind and throw things up on the board without some kind of framework that says this is going to require some extra budget. The strategic planning process unto itself is, so the strategic planning process unto itself is, is is set, is designed to set us up for sound financial planning. And the financial planning aspect of it will occur over a couple of cow sessions. So if you want to say to us, staff, please explore, you know, please explore this, we've got multiple opportunities to leave committee of the whole with marching orders, do research and bring options back to you to see if, if what you're visioning has, has different price points, different, you know, as it relates to cost, taxes, etc. Does that help you?
That, gentlemen? That helps? Yogi?
Yeah.
Any questions on what was stated? Counselor Poulsen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that the OCP won't be complete until later this year too. And with the, once that is complete, then seems to me like the strategic plan is built around the OCP as each year as we go, so we have to consider what's in our in our plan and build the strategic plan around that, so I would suggest that we don't even consider having a, a third party consultant until after the OCP plan is completed.
Yeah, I don't think, I think it was mentioned not to bring in a consultant for the six to fifteen grand. And that we could do that in the staff and CAO has said, that can be done in-house, opposed to spending
Yep.
that kind of money, so I completely agree.
But I'm, I'm just talking to the second part of the information as to holding, holding, doing option one, but, and not considering option three as a, as a possibility later in the fall. I think we should just go with option one.
Anybody else have any questions? CEO or CFO, is that it for that? We can move on?
Mr. Mayor, so the detail that needs to be worked out now is the schedule. And I think the CFO and I need to put our heads together. I have, I have prep time that I need to do in terms of organizing, you know, the, the strategic planning process. And staff time, I don't think will be as difficult to, to find. But I think we need to look, I think we need to look particularly at our, our cow schedule as it is right now, and I need to try to convince our CFO, if we can revise the cow meeting schedule a bit, we're scheduled to meet again in this forum in two weeks. And and that's probably, well, let's leave it at that, I think, I, we need to work, myself and the CFO need to work together to create a a, a schedule, and then we'll reach out to council and just communicate some options to you via email.
Yeah, that sounds good, and thank you for the electronic invites. If we continue to do that, that'd be wonderful. Makes it really easy in terms of setting up the calendar, now that I know where that is. So that the council directs staff to develop a strategic planning process for our council and the senior leadership team as per option one? Motion, please?
Move that.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, carry. Sorry, can I get clarification on what the senior leadership team is? That's a new thing on our.
From my perspective, that would be myself, our CFO, our public works manager and our recreation manager.
So all, when you say senior leadership, all four, or everybody's going to be involved in, in that process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Financial plan, 2023, 2027, that the committee of the whole receives the financial plan, 2023 to 2027, report for information and discussion. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Carried. However, is there things you'd like to speak of? See, to me, when it's in receipt, all we're doing is there generally stops really any discussion on receipt. It's just either we receive it or we don't. But on this particular one, there was no option for further discussion. Like no second part to that, so it kind of procedurally, it makes me kind of go, what am I supposed to do? Counselor Tinsley?
I, I just had a question, like, it says, report for information and discussion, right?
Yeah, but generally, for, for report, report to be received, it's received. And there's generally no discussion on receiving it. It's either we receive it or we don't.
Okay.
You vote for it or against it. And then, once it's received, then we have the discussion on the item. Is that not correct?
I think it's all a matter of perspective, if I may, I would suggest that this report is being offered to you to receive and discuss it.
Counselor Burchett?
All right, as for, as for discussion here, there's no page, but it's a I'm trying to reference it here. It's under the cleaning and painting of village on page one, two, three, four. The category is tourism development.
Are you under the strategic plan now?
No, we're talking about the financial plan. I thought we're done with the strategic plan.
Yeah, I was just trying to find where you are, sorry.
If I can interject, I'm just going to ask for councils patience with us and apologize, we didn't print page numbers on it. So if you could just help everybody along, if you're leading us somewhere in the report.
No, Mr. Mayor does not have it. Mr. Mayor is.
And neither do staff.
Five pages from the beginning. The staff don't have it either. I was in the financial plan at one point. You got a heading? That's not, okay, village operations?
Right there.
No? No?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
No, it's five pages in. No, it's this one.
Yeah. There you go.
Yes. Okay, so are we all on the same page? Please, Counselor Burchett, go ahead.
Yeah, so the category is tourism development, I see the budget is twelve thousand five hundred. And under the comments, I'm assuming that it's painting the Kelsey Center, the fire hall, the RCMP building. And I want clarification on how painting the fire hall and RCMP building are part of tourism development.
Well, that, that is a very good question, the funds are coming from the grant, is that not correct? No, I thought they were coming from the restart. That's what we decided at a meeting a while ago, if we were going to. That's what we decided at a meeting a while ago if we were going to. Everybody talked about because, um, I was, um, going on about taking that money and using it for something else or saving it towards that four hundred thousand that we may need if the grant comes through and and then somebody said, well, we can use that as money from the restart grant. Go ahead, C A O.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, you didn't afford, um, uh, CFO Clark to provide a brief introduction to her staff report. Um, so what she was going to do is just let staff, let council know that um, we've provided you this information, basically just to give you a first glance at everything, not to dive into the details tonight. Uh, and, uh, and and this is just a sort of a, an example of the information we're going to share with you. Uh, encourage you to look at it, get a feel for it, what things would you like to have more information about, et cetera, but, um, there is more fulsome information coming forward to you as part of the budget planning process. This was just intended tonight to be first blush introduction to it. Uh, Counselor Breschett's getting the feel for it, uh, developing some questions. I don't know if there's more questions, but, uh, we weren't necessarily looking to feel those tonight, more so collect them and or or just give you a first introduction to it.
So we're not going into the weeds, as they say.
Correct.
Counselor Breschett?
Thank you for clarifying that, and I won't dive any deeper with my other post-it notes here.
Please save those for the next cow. So the next cow, we're going to ask more questions, and the final cow, all our questions will be answered. Is that not correct, C A O?
Yes, we, and we do have a couple of more sessions. I would encourage council. If you are reading through your documents and you're forming a collection of questions, please email them to the CFO so she can have them in advance. We can, we can, you know, do a, provide you a much better service working with information in advance versus, um, you know, using our limited period of time here in the in the open meetings to 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 think on our feet, so, um, that we don't look forward to doing that, but, uh, but I I in all seriousness, I would encourage you, read through the document, um, form your question, send an email off to the CFO. She can start working on that and will certainly be prepared, and it also allows us for follow-up questions back to you for clarification if if something is not a hundred percent clear.
Now, don't forget, all these questions that you would email in are still going to be brought up during the council meeting, which is important for the public as well and every other person sitting around, so we get a basic understanding of what's happening. Is that correct, C A O?
Yes, and I would encourage you when you're sending your questions in to copy your colleagues um, on your email so that they can see the questions being asked and I don't need to duplicate it. And you you might also be smart enough to be able to to spur on your colleagues in terms of things they can be thinking about. It's a team effort.
We could be smart enough. Yes. Okay. So well, new business. None. Public question period. Anybody online? Jen, do you have any questions? Would you like to come and ask? No? Okay. In camera, none? Adjournment? None? Counselor Gilken would not like to adjourn, is that correct? But if anybody needs any more clarification of where we are right now, now's a good time before the adjournment to ask. Okay? Because we're still in session. No, everybody's good. This is me communicating better. Counselor Paulson?
I would just like to ask the CFO if she wants to give a short, um, overview of the financial report that you didn't have a chance to do.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Um, I think my my purpose and my intent is clear in the report, so I think I'm good. Yeah, thank you. As long as council's okay with my report and has no questions, yes.
Anyone? No? We're done.